Started with National Grid. Let's see, is Donna Kristen, do they want to speak on this at all, or?
I'm muting them.
I think, are we unmuted? Oh, good.
You are unmuted. You're on.
Yes, well, thanks for being willing to listen to us once again. We actually are happy to say that National Grid finally resolved the issues and we are able to move forward. So it is a, it is not just a request for an extension hoping that things will move. It is that National Grid has now opened it back up. We are hoping that we can construct exactly the project that we had planned. This, we think we'll probably be ready to start in late summer this year. And we'll move fairly quickly. So with, if there were any questions on sort of what the original plan was, if that's helpful, we could kind of give a summary, but it was a, there is a thirty-six-plus lot that we own now on around fifty Main Road. And we had a, two small arrays up way out of sight, up into the, there's sort of a terrace to the, to the land there. So it's up, out, off of the road, behind the trees, not visible to anybody. And it's three hundred and forty-five kilowatts. Relatively small array compared to what people are doing. And we are thrilled to not only have the interconnect coming, but also our financing partners, we checked back in with them and we're all ready to go, if you'll, if you'll have us.
Okay, so the board members, if you remember, we did grant an extension last year through no fault of light, was it light touch solo? Yeah. And no fault in their own, National Grid kind of like slowed them down a little bit. So I was checking the statutes and stuff to see like if you could extend the permits. I know you can give them the extension. I don't know how many. I was looking. I couldn't find any restrictions on it. I feel we're fine to go. If the board decides they want to give them the extension, which I'm in favor of, by the way. Any discussion from the board members?
No, I might add though that Vern has joined us.
I see he's coming in and out. But now I see his name on there, so that's good.
Yeah, he was under planning board for some reason.
I see.
I renamed it to just Vern.
So do we?
I don't have any questions.
We could use the same, we could use the same paperwork for the extension. We can just change the dates on it from what we used last year. If you remember, we sent it to town council to get the appropriate language. But we can look at that and just extend the date for a year from now on the same one. So do we, do we have a motion?
How many kind of motion we accept that, as good?
To extend the, the special permit, the timeframe, okay? Do I have a second? Okay, motion's made in second. And any other discussion on that? I'm slow because I'm writing this down.
I am recording.
Okay, seeing that, all in favor by a roll call vote. Why don't we start with, with John?
Leftyak, aye.
Dan?
Sands, an aye.
Gordon?
Robertson, aye.
Vern?
I'm all set, yes.
That's an aye. Mallow, an aye. So voted unanimous. Good luck, Dawn and Kristen. We'll get that out to you, okay?
Thank you very much. Wonderful to see you.
Good luck. Okay, we're going to move on now to the, the next thing is the, on the agenda is a marijuana moratorium, moratorium. I think the, I think the Attorney General's Office is trying to get a, an idea of what we're doing. At this time, we didn't get any, we didn't get anything back from our responses in, in the newsletter asking if there should be any modifications or amendments to the marijuana by law as it stands. In enough fairness to the Attorney General's Office, to the applicants, or whatever, anyway, they're waiting for us to make a decision if we're going to have a town meeting in that. I think what I, what I'd like to do is, and with the board's approval, we'd have to vote on this, is to just notify the town attorney that at this time, we have no plans on making any amendments to the marijuana by law as it stands for this town meeting. And see if they grant us any more time, or if they tell us like, or tell us what they're, what they're going to decide, I guess is what, what it comes down to. If you remember, there was an eighteen-month moratorium voted by the town at town meeting, because we had some questions from some people at previous town meetings. We sent an, we sent a questionnaire out in the newsletter. We really didn't get any responses back to any type of amendments. We weren't looking for, there was a few individuals that said we shouldn't have it in Phillipston at all. That's not what we were looking for. That's not even on the table. It was if we should make some changes to the district, the size, the type of operations. And it's not to say that we can't move forward and still do this at another town meeting later on. I'm just saying, right now, we don't have anything in place for any changes at this year's annual town meeting. So I'm going to listen to some discussion from the other board members, what their feelings are on this.
Well, I think, I agree with you where, the only comment that I saw was, you know, that they shouldn't think Phillipston should have a, a facility, but that not within our scope, or that's not even something you could ask for at this point. But there was nothing else that I saw, so I'd say, received it like you said. I don't have any, what else would we do?
Can I add? Vern, you want to say something?
I, this is Vern, yes. The few people that I've heard and spoke with, they don't like that kind of traffic in Phillipston. And that's bogus. Because if you get off exit eighteen, Esther West, you're only going to be in Phillipston, Phillipston for about eight mile. And you're going to get right back on the highway, and you're going to go where you came from. And it's not adding a hell of a lot of traffic. With the shopping hazard down there, there's more traffic than you'll ever need. And to use traffic as an excuse for not wanting it is bogus.
Well, again, what we weren't, the intention of the newsletter article was not if we weren't going to allow it at all in Phillipston. It was what type of amendments, if they had, if there was some other criteria that we should apply to it. If you remember, you know, for the ones that went to town meetings, that some individuals got up and they spoke about having it too close to, to a school or, but, but that doesn't apply to this. You know, how many feet from a property line. Those things have already been addressed. There was nothing concrete that came in that we can think that would have any effect on this. So the Attorney General's Office gave us some additional time already to, to see where we're, we're going with this. And if we had something in place to tell them, I think they would probably say, they may not, okay, but I think they would probably say, well, if you're going to have a town meeting, we'll make to make a decision till after that. But the indication that they gave us is that a moratorium is not needed. If we don't give them something solid, concrete reason why before the end of March, they're ever going to reject it. So I'm, I'm just, we can just let it play out and let them reject it. But I, I think appropriate thing to do at this point is just let them know that we don't have any, we don't have anything planned for this annual town meeting. Not to say that we're not going to do something in the future, if somebody brings up a good idea. But right now, just so that everybody's not out there wondering what's going on. So, okay, Gordon, you have any comment on that?
I'll back you on that.
Would you agree what, just send them, have the attorney do it? I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to call the Attorney General's Office. But Tom McInerney from Colquhoun Page has many times sent emails to the town, to, to the, I think they went to the selectmen also in, into some planning board members that they weren't looking favorably on, on us having the moratorium. So, does it make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Okay, so that, that's what we'll do. We should do it by a vote, just so that, and again, we're not going to, we're not going to talk to the Attorney General's Office. We'll just tell the town attorneys, if they get contacted again by the, the Attorney General's Office, to know where we're at. Okay? Is there anything from the public on this? Does anybody, you know, is, does somebody want to say something? I don't see any hands going up. Okay, do I have a motion?
So the motion would be to contact?
Town council.
And tell them that there is no changes that we wish to make at this time?
At this time.
I don't know, do we need more than that?
I don't think so. We're only telling town council. We're not telling them, you know what I mean? They can figure out the legalities from there. Is that a motion?
I'll second it.
The motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye by roll call vote.
Sands, an aye.
Gordon, yes.
Gordon, aye.
Okay, Mallow, an aye. So voted unanimous. Okay, I had a problem with this. I was trying to get the budget for next year. Kevin had sent it to me, but it's encrypted. I didn't know if, did anybody else get, get the, a copy of the budget?
I don't have it.
Well, I got, I got a copy. And it was to the, to the, my town email, and I couldn't open it. But then I went, for some reason, I get duplicate emails to my, my regular email, it came in and it was on there. But that doesn't help you unless you wanted me to try to pull it up.
Could you open it on your regular email?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I could get it up here. I can try.
I, I saw the other ones. There were six other ones with the planning board one. But I couldn't open the planning board one.
Yeah, I don't know why.
I have a, this is Vern. I have a question.
Vern, you had a question?
Yes. I wanted to see it. And if you opened it up, it would take me a while to read it. Can I base my vote on what yours is? Is that legal?
You, you don't have to. We're just reviewing it to see if there's something that needs to be changed. We've, we already did it like a couple of weeks ago, but Kevin was supposed to email it to me like right after the meeting, and a couple of weeks went by. And I just want to make sure that it's satisfactory for the, you know, based on what we discussed for the finance committee.
Okay.
But I, you know, I, I think we're on, I, I think we're on March twenty-fifth for the finance committee. I'll go to that meeting, and if there's something that's different, we'll try to get it straightened out at that point. So I don't want to waste a lot of time on it, because if we can't pull it up, I can't tell you if there's anything wrong with it, because I can't pull it up. Like, it's encrypted, and every time I tried it, I couldn't, like, I tried to download.
Like I said, it showed up on the other email, but that's, that's not the official one.
Okay, well, let's move on. Do we have any, you know what I should do is step back a little bit, because we had this thing for seven fifteen. And that's to do with, with Tempest for the commercial site plan review. I just want to tell you that peer review sent some things. I sent them back to Damon. He's having his engineer work on them, and then we got to get them back to McCarty Engineering, the peer review guy that we use. And so we had previously continued the public hearing. And, and last week, we were going to continue it further, but then we had that glitch with the, with the Zoom meeting. So just so that everybody knows, and we should probably take a vote on this to continue to Tempest Commercial Site Plan Review Public Hearing until, where am I? Did I give you guys a date? Until, um, until April fifth. That's the first Monday, guys? Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Some more.
Wait.
Okay, most, motion's made.
You asked me about, uh, the March twenty-second. Is that something else?
I can't, John, you're coming in a week. I can't hear you.
Oh, you had asked about March twenty-second? That's just a regular meeting?
That's, that's, we're going to get into that. That's different. Okay, this is for, this is for April fifth to continue the Tempest hearing. So we have a motion from, from Dan.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing that, um, favor, say aye by roll call. John?
Leftyak, aye.
Dan?
Sands, an aye.
Gordon?
Aye, Robertson.
Vern?
I'm okay, yep.
Vern, aye, and Mallow, an aye. So voted, okay? Okay, next. I didn't know, Gordon, do we have any mail, by the way? You don't know?
I didn't get a chance to vote today, and, no.
Okay, we can follow up on that. So the board members know that Kevin gave me a set of keys for the annex and for the office over there. So at some point, we're going to try to go over there and, and straighten it out a little bit, maybe get our file cabinets in there. And and Gordon, he gave me a laptop. So I don't know if that's helpful, but it's in our office over there. So I, I think what I'll do, because he only gave me one key to the office, is I'll have some keys made. I don't know, Dan, do you want a key to get into the office, or?
No, I won't need one.
Okay. I think what I'll do is I'll have two keys made, so Gordon can get in and John can get in. So if we have to do some kind of pull some records or something from somebody, for somebody, they have them.
How many annex keys did you get?
I got one.
Gordon, you have one, right?
I have one.
But Gordon doesn't have a key to the office, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just wondering, is that key the one I gave you, or?
Yes.
Okay, so I may need one, but I'll check my, I'll check my keys. I got a big wad of keys. I'll see if, if I already have one.
Okay.
I definitely don't want one.
So we're all set with that. I think there was some, some, some previous discussion about our secretary position. At some point, we're, we're going to probably just have to advertise and hire one, because we're not having a success like getting one to share from town hall or, or any other means. So I'll try to figure out that, how we're going to proceed with the, find out to some policy for, for posting and, and the like, you know what I mean? But I think it's time we get a secretary after two years of trying to do it all ourselves. Okay? The, the other things, I had talked to a second engineering company about the new zoning map. I don't know how this is going to work out. I asked him if he could get us some type of a quote before the end of the year, that we have a little bit of money, not much. I don't think we have enough to do it. But if we do, maybe we could get that done. I don't know if everybody remembers, but there's been some question over the years about where the commercial zone runs through and abuts the the residential and the recreational zone. So I think the people on the planning board that's, that have been around have heard it come up a few times from engineers and surveyors and stuff, like, they can't really figure it out. So I'll keep you up to date on that. Did you get my email of this evening about the legal notice for the public hearing for the, I'm trying, I'm trying to find the right language here, for the, to prohibit dirt in motocross tracks, dirt bikes and and John, my, my reason for you to have the meeting, now you might understand on the, on the twenty-second? So we can have a public hearing on the twenty-second. But I need a Zoom numbers. So that, so I can post it. Okay.
Do you, do you want that document on the public hearing brought up, or?
Um, you can, you can.
If you want.
In case anybody has a question.
Someone? Show up? I'm seeing it. Can you see it?
I can see it.
No, I can see it, that's.
So I'll have to add some, I'll have to add in there the Zoom meeting and the numbers and stuff, so people can.
I'll do that. First thing, I'll get those numbers so you can send it out.
Yeah, so what we're going to do is we're going to, I sent this to you so that, instead of trying to do this after we vote on it, I think it's so that you know what we're voting on. So we're going to, so we would have a public hearing at seven fifteen, or March twenty-second. There's Zoom. Okay, to accept the public comments. Now, this is only, was a little confusing to me, because there was two different petitions sent. I believe the only petition that was sent would be, a planning board is for the zoning by law amendment. And maybe Kevin would know better on that, because he's the one that sent it to me. Bonnie, am I right? There was two different petitions?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, I am, Bonnie.
Okay, um, this petition is the zoning by law amendment, which would go to the planning board.
Okay.
Other, the other petition was a noise control by law, which would go to the Board of Select.
Okay. So have, have you been dealing with the Board of Selectmen on the?
I have not met with the Board of Selectmen yet to ask them for a date for a hearing.
Okay, so anyway, this is the one for the zoning by law. This is.
Separate anyway, right?
Excuse me?
You would want them separate, right?
I, I think it's probably best so they don't get confused. So this is the one as, as submitted by the, by the citizen petition. So we're not, our, our job is if someone submits it to, to look at it and try to have the public hearing and, and get it on the you know, an article at town meeting. So again, again, like I said, this was, this is how it would go on the, an article for the town meeting, and this is how the public hearing would go. So it's a, it's a little bit complicated. If my, my understanding is, if somebody doesn't like this, they may have to submit another petition to remove or, to remove the, the petition we already gotten and start again, if they want to change the language of it. It can't be substantially different than, than like what's written down. So I don't want to get into the, you know, the legalities of it, but this is. you know, the, the legalities of it, but this is what was submitted. And, um, our job is to, uh, proceed with it, so. Any questions from anybody? Okay, so we have a motion to have a, um, a meeting on March, twenty-second and have a public hearing at seven fifteen for the citizen's petition. Um, as, as written, this will go, I'll get this out to the newspaper, so, the ad can go in. We've got to send that to all the other authorities, as you know. Um, and go from there.
I'll make that motion as you stated.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's made.
Clarification, uh, so that, that, those would be our two, um, March meetings. Would be tonight and the twenty-second.
Correct. And, and I needed, I needed to do that when I did this, uh, schedule, I needed to do that so we could meet, the, uh, two week in the one week requirement for the advertising.
Yep. So I'm good with that.
We couldn't get it in otherwise, so. Okay, so motion's made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Yes, when would they, when would the articles appear in the newspaper?
I believe, um, I'm not positive, Barney, because some of it's going to depend on, um, some of it's going to depend on when they can, uh, get it in, but my, I thought I had the dates written down with me here, but. Uh, where did I put it? Um, the, the first one would be this Friday and the second one would be next Friday.
Okay.
You have to be, you, you, you have to be at least seven days before, not counting the day of the meeting, and at least fourteen days before. You can be, you can be like ten days before and, and seventeen days before, but you gotta be at least seven, and at least fourteen.
Right.
So I, I have to get it, I, I guess I could do it like next Monday. I want it in Friday, so if somebody misses it, we see, we look, we say there's a problem, we've got to get this, uh, straightened out in a greater way. Okay? Any other questions, Barney?
Hmm, if, uh, what if, i- if there is to be a definition for track, included, would that, uh, go under the, um, section of definitions and would we have to admit, written material for that in advance of the hearing?
Um, I, I would say, I would say yes. You could probably get away with it if nobody challenged it, but, if somebody, challenged it, it, it doesn't, it would be different from what the, um, what the petition had attached to it.
Mm-hmm.
So, a- again, if you want to follow the, the letter of how the, uh, Mass General Law is, you could look up, um, you could, you could look up, uh, uh, Mass General Law forty-eight, section five and, and see how it pertains to that, but, it, it's pretty clear that it has to be in the same context as, um, or the same text as it submitted on the petition. Again, if you start going in other places, then the other people who signed the petition, you know, you, you can't change it because it's only one person trying to change. That's why I say the, the recommendation was like to, to, uh, withdraw the petition, and then get all the stuff back together and submit it. And that's entirely how it's supposed to be. But I'll let you, um, I'll let you try to decipher that. Um.
And that would have to be done by the twenty-second?
I, I think, hmm, you mean to change the text or to withdraw?
Well, the amendment would not be, the, the, the text of the amendment would not be changed. It just, the addition, or a definition for the word track.
We probably would have to do everything that we're doing over again. Yes, you could leave this, this one and then do an, an additional amendment. Um, I, I don't know if we have enough time. John, do you know when town meeting is, by the way? Is it early May or the middle of May?
Oh, May fifth is the town meeting.
May fifth? Um, I don't, I don't think we have enough time. I mean, you can, you can certainly, try to do another petition and, and add that to it. Just for the definitions is, is what you're talking about? The definition of a track?
Yes.
You would have to have people sign again, would have to advertise again, have to have another public hearing. I, I can't like change thi- this one because, in, in all fairness, Barney, I, I know you, probably got the other people and, and say like spearheaded this, and, and that's fine. I'm not having a problem with that, but, in, in all fairness, if somebody else signed a petition, with some other language in it, I, I, I don't feel comfortable about changing the language in that, petition. If you want to go back to the people and say, we need another petition to do this, um, tha- that's your right. You, you can do that. I, I would say, we, we don't want this thing to get out of control and people start saying like, we're wasting a bunch of taxpayers' money, because as, as you know, every time we do, these things, they, there's a little bit of, uh, money involved with them, so. But I can't, I can't stop you from submitting another petition. You have the right to do that as a citizen in the public sector.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And I, and I'm not complaining that, that you sent this in and stuff, I'm just telling you the, the format that we're supposed to follow. And it might be aggravating right now, but at the end of the day, if the whole thing gets passed,
Yeah.
for some reason, and then someone challenges it, um, with the Attorney General's office, they're going to say like, you didn't do this, you know, you, someone changed the text like halfway through the process. It, it's not a good thing to do. So.
Alright.
I think, I think we know what we should be doing and, and that's how we'll proceed, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions on that? Do we have a, a vote? I, I don't think we took, uh, we didn't take a vote on that one, to have that meeting?
So. We did have a motion and second.
Motion and seconded. And the, the other discussion was when Barney came in. Any other discussion? See you in that, roll call vote?
Let's, yeah, aye.
Sand and aye.
Gordon?
Bernie, yes.
Bernie?
Yes.
Okay, and Gordon, you said yes, correct?
Aye.
Okay, Malo and aye. So voted unanimous for that. We'll have that, uh, public hearing for that, for the text that was submitted with, um, um, with the petition. Anything else? Gordon, what, do you have any minutes or do you want to do it next meeting?
Uh, next time.
Next time?
Yeah, I want to get, I want to talk to you first.
Okay, um.
I just want to compare notes. I don't want to be overly redundant.
No, I, I, I understand. That, that's not a problem. Um, I think that is all we have. Anything else that any of the board members have, or? Any questions from anybody?
Uh, just about that computer you mentioned.
What, what was that, uh, Gordon?
The computer you received from, uh, Kevin?
Yeah.
The old one that's been like refurbished?
You know, I want to know what the old one.
Cause I can remember too, just so you know.
I, I remember you, yeah, I remember you, you mentioned that, so, um.
I was just curious.
But I did ask the, the girl, I think her name was Lynn, is she the treasurer?
Yeah.
Um, she does IT stuff or something, or tries to, um, program the computers or deprogram or whatever. But I says, this is fine, but can we print with this? And you might need to get, um, get in touch with her to, because she was trying to explain to me how you do all this stuff and I'm, I'm there like, you know, I don't think I want to waste my time on trying to figure out how a laptop prints, on ano- on another, uh, printer. But she said that there's a way that we can make it print, the printer, the copying machine, the printer that's in the, um, in the annex.
Sounds about right.
Yeah, I didn't.
It shouldn't be too tricky.
You can always check with Ruth and afford a help.
Well, that might be a, that might be an option. So. Okay, well, anyway, Gordon, we can, we can figure out because we've got to set up that office still.
Yes, yeah, I can spend some time.
And, and just so the other board members know, the MyLad is going to be at town hall, for, uh, for signing for this, uh, for the Wilson property, okay? Anything else? Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded or adjourned by roll call vote. John?
Let's, yeah, aye.
Sand and aye.
Bernie?
Bernie, all right?
Yep. Gordon?
Bernie, I'm okay.
Okay, Malo and I, we're adjourned, okay? Good night, guys.
Okay, one more question for you, Bernie.
One more question.
Yeah, wait, when are you going to be over at the annex? You need me help?
Um, I'm not sure yet. I'll try to figure out a time and.
Okay, if you need help, give me a buzz. I'm always free.
Yeah, I, you know, we're going to need help with this. Getting the file cabinets in, in the office, but I think what I'm going to do is see if, if the, PPW guys, because they moved them from the town hall over there, so, they must have some dollies or some equipment that they can, put them in the office, which, which is better than, some of us older gentlemen trying to pick up a four hundred pound cabinet, so. Okay?
Good enough, my friend. Have a good one.
Have a good one. We'll see you, guys.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Yeah, bye.